Uh, good evening, Wareham, and welcome to the December nineteenth, twenty twenty-three Select Board Meeting. May I have a roll call, please, Mr. Chadwick?
Tonight in attendance, we have Ms. Whiteside, Mr. Sullivan, uh, waiting on Mr. Bowen and uh, Mr. Slaven, absent tonight will be Mr. Bessie.
I'm going to not open the meeting until I have Mr. Bowen in, Mr., um. Noah, Mr. Bowen's here and Mr. Slaven is here. If you could let them both in, then I, then I will have a quorum, please. And I'll ask you to do the roll call again, Mr. Chadwick, I'm sorry.
All right, now present, uh, Ms. Whiteside. Mr. Slaven, myself, Jared Chadwick, Mr. Sullivan, and Mr. Bowen are also present.
Thank you. Uh, Pledge of Allegiance, I'm gonna ask Mr. Matt Stanton to do the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Stanton, please. There you go.
Sorry about that. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Stanton. I'm going to go to residence comments. If any of you chooses to address the on something that is not on the agenda, please raise your hand. And I'm gonna ask one more time if there's anyone who chooses to address the board on a non-agenda item, please raise your hand. I see none, Mr. Chadwick. You see none, right?
Do I have none?
Okay, excellent. Um, we're gonna hold off on the recognition for the cadet.
He should be dialing in right now.
Okay, Mr. Noah, would you let Wareham, WFD, in because I'm guessing that's Chris Smith? And, um, Mr. Chadwick, when he comes in, I'll have him address us. Robert Sylvia, can you raise your hand? And Mr. Noah, Noah Sullivan, could you let Robert Sylvia in too? And I don't know. Uh, let's go back to the certificate of recognition. This evening, we have with us Robert Sylvia. And is, if your mom is here, she should raise her hand. I don't know if that's her phone number or not. Hi, Mr. Robert, how are you this evening? You're muted, buddy.
Good, how are you?
Good, great. Um. We have had, since the JROTC program started several years ago, three individuals who have won the, um, Cadet Legion of Valor Award, which is a really incredible award. Uh, and Robert Sylvia is this year's winner, not that there's a winner every year, because as I say, we've had, since two thousand five, we've had one winner in two thousand nineteen and one in two thousand twenty-one. Robert is a student at the high school. Um, he likes reading and movies and woodworking and comics. He's gotten into, I think, Wentworth, UMass Lowell, or UMass Boston, and wants to join the Air National Guard. Wants to be a computer science teacher and learn carpentry. Um, Mr. Chadwick often needs help in carpentry, Mr. Sullivan. Really not very good at it. Not only is he great in the JROTC program, which I think is, is a really great thing in the high school. He also is a winner of the John and Abigail Adams Scholarship, which means that he scored um, in the top ten percent of his, uh, class for the MCAS, and that's a free tuition to any state uh, university, college, or university in Massachusetts. So that's, that's big. Um, we do have a certificate for you. Is your, is your mother here, Robert?
Yes.
Is, is that the one six four six? Would you like her into the meeting, or?
Oh, she's not in the meeting, but she's, she's in the time room with me.
Oh, okay. We have an award for you, um, which says, "The Select Board from Wareham, Massachusetts awards the Certificate of Recognition to Robert Sylvia, Cadet Lieutenant Colonel." "This National JROTC Award is being presented to Cadet Lieutenant Colonel Robert Sylvia, an exceptional student and the JROTC Cadet Battalion Commander at Wareham High School." "The award represents countless hours of service to his community, excellence in academics, and demonstrated exceptional leadership which define his character." "The award is the Legion of Valor with Bronze Cross for Achievement, and is given to a very select group of young men and women across the nation." "Robert is the third JROTC cadet in the school's JROTC program to receive this honor." "The Legion of Valor organization is composed of veterans who have distinguished themselves by either earning the Medal of Honor or their respective service's highest award for gallantry, the Navy Cross, the Army Distinguished Service Cross, or the Air Force Cross." "This award is open to all high school JROTC and college ROTC cadets." "The Legion of Valor with Bronze Cross is awarded to JROTC cadets who demonstrate outstanding performance, dependability and good character, adherence to military discipline, and leadership ability." "The criteria for this award make it exceptionally difficult to earn, as only the most dedicated cadets are chosen." "Robert was one of the four thousand JROTC cadets selected nationally this year from over five hundred and fifty-three thousand cadets around the world." "Robert's accomplishments also include Military Order of War, World Wars Medal, being captain of the marksmanship team for two years, co-captain of the Raiders for two years, a Superior Cadet Medal, Battalion Commander of the Viking Battalion, again, the, uh, John and Abigail Adams Scholarship, and an S-one Personnel Officer on the JROTC staff." "It is with great pleasure and humility that the Select Board award our certificate of appreciation to Robert Sylvia, presented this nineteenth day of December, twenty twenty-three." And Robert, if you could hold up your award. Nicely done, sir.
Nice job, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, I think you've been trash picking. I know I've seen you in the classroom, and I know that Mr. Stanton, Colonel, like um, Colonel Stanton is very, very proud of you. Mr. Stanton, would you choose to address us too?
Uh, just, uh, thanks, Chair Whiteside. Um, you know, just hearing the description of, uh, the what the criteria for the award. Um, Robert fits it perfectly. He's been tremendously dedicated for the past four years in the JROTC program. He, um, has, uh, been really fighting hard to reach his potential as a leader, and he's made tremendous progress over the years. We're so excited to see what the future holds for Robert. Um, you know, he leads by example in all that he does, and he's so committed to the community and to the program and to his classmates. Uh, we couldn't be more proud of Robert. Uh, so we, we join you in our congratulations to him.
Thank you. Thank you very much, and, and congratulations, Robert, and enjoy a merry a holiday season, safe holiday season, and best wishes in your future endeavors.
Thank you, you too.
Thank you, take care.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Let's go to, we'll go back to announcements, but I want to get Mr. Smith, um, appointed, please, Mr. Chadwick. Oh, Mr. Smith. First of all, would you identify yourself? And, uh, you're here to be appointed to, as an associate position on the Alternative Energy Committee. Can you speak to why you would want to be on that committee, sir? First of all, identify yourself.
Chris Smith, I'm, uh, captain here at Wareham Fire. Um, we got quite a few years in fire prevention here now, um, going on my seventh year, eighth year. Um. Good background on the code. Solar and energy storage has become hot topic, not only in town, but in the whole, in the Commonwealth. Um, we take endless classes on this stuff. So I think I have a little bit I can bring to the table as far as from a code perspective. Um, and then as a citizen at large, I have my own opinions too. So most of the time I'll be representing myself as a citizen, but with that code background, I think I can help out a little bit.
And you've already attended at least one meeting that I know of.
Yes, we've only had one meeting, um, and I did attend the meeting.
Either of my peers have any questions or comments?
I just wanna thank Chris, I've known him for quite a while, and I'm sure he'll do a great job for us. Thanks, though.
Jared, Jared?
Yes. Um, I've known Captain Smith for a couple of years now. Um, I just wanna say thank you very much for for joining us. This was one of my biggest concerns when, uh, this group was introduced to us. Um, you know, as, as you know, it's, it's a huge danger, uh, for people in our field. Yep. Uh, so always worrying about him, and, and thank you. Thank you very much for your time with us.
No problem, no problem at all.
Thanks very much. Mr. Chadwick will accept a motion, please.
I move to appoint Captain Chris Smith to the Alternative Energy Committee as Associate Term to expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
Motion made and seconded. So any further discussion on the motion to appoint? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Myself, yes, it is so. Mr. Smith, the paperwork, you, I'm sure you already have your um, ethics and open meeting law certificates from your job. If you could just bring those to the office and then they tell you what you need in order to be sworn in.
Sure thing.
Okay, thanks so much.
Holidays to everybody.
Thank you.
You too.
Thank you. Um, I'm going to ask that we do the one other appointment. We'll go to announcements, and then I'm going to ask that we go to a presentation, which is under nine, blah, blah. Nine, it's under section nine. Um, we have three individuals who can speak to uh, a presentation that they will be making, and again, we have a lot of paperwork that we need to get through, so I'd rather have them come before us, if that's okay. So um, Mr. Chadwick, may I have a motion on the two certified waymasters, please?
Yes, I, sir, uh, I move, uh, I move for the certified waymasters with terms to expire December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four for Brian uh, Lecca and Danielle Lecca.
Is there a second to that?
Second, well, I
There's a motion and a second. It's Walaka, yeah. Um, any further discussion on the motion to approve?
Doesn't matter.
Sorry.
Stop. Um, hearing that, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Slaven?
Well, lucky, yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is so. Mr. Titlebomb has let me know that he's having trouble staying in the meeting, so we will hold off on that for a moment. Mr. Chadwick, how about the licenses? Oh, let's go to announcements before I forget again. Mr. Slaven?
Okay, yeah, first we have announcements from Mrs. Slaven. January ninth, second Tuesday in January, is the deadline to submit Community Preservation Act grants for consideration at the Springtown Meeting. Applications are available on the Community Preservation Committee webpage. Questions and emails, cpc@wareham dot mass dot U S. Let's carry that. Uh, okay. I'd like to, uh, thank the COA, which is really starting to max out the multi-service center with all kinds of programs, et cetera. There was a Christmas party dinner, if you wanna call it that lunch, uh, on Wednesday last week. Over a hundred and sixty people were there. It was a great event. Everybody had a wonderful time. Partial sponsorship through veterans organizations, Elks, a few others. Then again, on, uh, Saturday, uh, we had another Christmas party, same kind of thing, about a hundred and twenty people came. And, uh, Dani and her group of people put on an excellent meal, and everybody again had a great time. It worked out really well. It's nice to see the seniors up and moving forward with the the facility and all the events that are coming through the organization as well. Um, I just wanna make a note for people, uh, the Swiss Beach intersection, which has been written up in the newspaper, and some of the information is really not been forthcoming properly, et cetera. Uh, the town of Wareham, uh, through myself and Mr. Sullivan, Mr. Manat have been working on the Swiss Beach intersection for quite a while. It, it's been, you know, two or three years before this incident, minimum, and we were able to break out the Swiss Beach intersection from the Route Six redo, which is not scheduled for a couple of years to even consider doing. And we've been able to get that particular section there with a new light put in and realigning the actual street to the from Route Six to Swiss Beach. Uh, so even though the article kinda says it's all of a sudden starting, the actual case is it's been on our books, actually in the, what we call the State Tip Program for almost two years now. So I just wanna clear that up, that we've actually been way ahead of this one, and we know there's an issue. We're doing our best. And the problem again is Route Six is a state road, and we're not allowed to do anything on our own, whether we like it or not. Um, also Route Six and Twenty-Eight, the project, uh, in East Wareham, which is the first section, is done as far as what can be done now. Uh, it'll be basically in April, the final coat on the road we put on, and there'll be an island removed over by the Redbrook, uh, Forty-B project, because they were late getting their stuff done. And that will be the end of that. We've actually started to apply for the second half of that project, which would be from Redbrook Road to Cohasset Narrows Road, and that's probably two or three years out minimum. And that's it for today, kids.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Chadwick?
I have none at this time.
Okay, I have none at this time either. Uh, so I'm gonna ask that Mr. Titlebomb, Mr. Tropiano, and Mr. Mannix, raise your hands, please. We are skipping on the agenda over to item nine C, which is discussion and possible vote to issue a letter in support of the proposed Crossroads Apartments Senior Affordable Local Initiative Project at two forty-two Sandwich Road. I'll ask that the individuals that we've had come into the meeting identify themselves for the record, and then I believe they have, well, you have stuff in your packet, but we may have screen sharing as well, I'm not sure.
Screen sharing is available.
Okay, thank you. So, Mr. Titlebomb, Mr. Tropiano, and Mr. Mannix, would you identify yourselves for the record, please?
Uh, I'm Peter Titlebomb. Uh, I'm the attorney for Fred Mannix, uh, who's looking to do the Crossroads Apartments at two forty-two Sandwich Road. And with me are Fred Mannix, who is the proponent and the developer and the holder of a current permit for an intermediate care facility at that address, and we also have Patrick Tropiano, who's been advising us on this process as well. Uh, you know, Patrick, former selectman, sat with all of you, well, not with Mr. Chadwick, but with the rest of you. Uh, if I may, what I'd like to do, uh, Madam Chair, is to briefly give a summary of sort of the where we are procedurally and why we're before you, and then I'd like to turn it over to, uh, Fred so that he can talk a little more about the actual, uh, intended end result here, uh, for the town. Uh, very briefly, as I said earlier, uh, Mr. Mannix applied to the, uh, zoning board of appeals and received a permit for eighty-four units, I believe, of uh, intermediate care. These were not considered residences under the zoning bylaw, but they ended up being, uh, considered as units. So this was a four-story building with, uh, a solarium on top of that and some other things on top of that. Uh, what he's proposing now, and this is due to the fact that the congregate care, nursing homes, uh, intermediate care facilities and things like that, they're becoming disfavored, uh, at the federal level. They're becoming disfavored at the state level as us baby boomers get older, uh, the desire is to try to keep us in our homes or at least apartments, and in that way avoid the entire Medicaid debacle. I can tell you as somebody who does some estate planning, that the state Medicaid unit is going crazy, making sure people spend down to two thousand dollars in assets, uh, and they're going after houses left and right. Uh, this is a disfavored way to, to keep us older people as we advance. Uh, so what we're looking to do here is to take what was originally the congregate care facility and turn it into sixty, uh, units of senior affordable housing. Mr. Mannix has met with people, uh, at the state level to talk about this. He has a meeting coming up with the Fred, jump in here. I can, can never remember this. They, they've changed the Department of Housing and Community Development. They've given it another title. The Executive Office of Housing and
Living Communities.
Living Communities, which is, you know, a senior cabinet position up on Beacon Hill. He's got a meeting with them to talk about, uh, you know, funding. He's met with other people in, in that department as well. Uh, we've spoken to the, uh, Wareham, uh, Housing Authority, and they're interested in issuing a letter in support of this. They've got hundreds of people in Wareham who are seniors who are looking for, for apartments. They don't have the room. You know, they, they just have a gigantic waiting list and they have forever. Mr. Mannix, uh, is somebody who's developed in Boston for a long, long time. Uh, he's I've got some things here I can show you possibly. Uh, if not, Fred can describe them, uh, which might be the better way to go, since I haven't been on Zoom for a while, so it's, it's rather interesting, uh, for me to try to figure things out. Um, so what we have now, uh, the current status of the project, is that this past fall, we received an extension of his two-year permit to build the congregate care facility. Uh, so he's, uh, with that, he can go forward until, uh, twenty twenty-four. I mean, I'm twenty twenty-five, actually, is when it expires. Uh, but he's changed his viewpoint on what he wants to do here. And what he's looking to do is an affordable housing project under the local initiative project provisions, uh, that the state allows. This is, uh, considered sort of a friendly Forty-B method. It's not coming in an antagonistic way of doing things, uh, as we've had some other people come into town, uh, who, you know, just went for density, density, density. Uh, he's actually shrinking his project down by, uh, an entire floor. He's reducing the number of units. He had his traffic study updated to reflect what this new use was when we went before the ZBA, and I think they found a whopping total of six more trips a day. Uh, these trips actually would involve far fewer large trucks going in there, because you're not gonna have the big Cisco truck going in for, uh, you know, to deliver the food if you've got, that you would need in an intermediate care facility. You're not gonna have, uh, the uniform truck, the census uniform truck going there, uh, because it's just gonna be residents. It's not going to be people coming to work there every day. So that's the long and short of it. Uh, I'm gonna try, I'm gonna turn it over to Fred, but in the meantime, I'm gonna try to share my screen if I can. So you can see what the project look like, is, if that's okay with you, Madam Chair?
That's fine, Mr. Titlebomb. Mr. Mannix, could you identify yourself and have the floor?
Okay.
Peter fiddles around with things that
Uh, members of the board, um, Madam Chairman, I, I, uh, my name is Fred Mannix. Um, I guess the background, the quick background, if I can be quick, uh, and it's not gonna be very hard to be quick after Peter. So I, I know, I know I can, I can do this. So what, 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 uh, what started out as intermediate care, uh, you know, and all the features that led me to do this, uh, the Toby Hospitals down the street, uh, everything is within a two-mile radius for, for for residents, for people to, uh, interact with the town, you know, uh, shopping, uh, recreation, restaurants, all of that, all of that is very close to that, that location. I think everybody knows the location. And, and what
Uh, no, we don't. Can you be really specific about where the location is?
The, the location is, is the, at the corner of Route Six and Route Twenty-Eight, uh, right, right next door to Upper Cape Realty. Between Plymouth Road and, and, uh, Route Twenty-Eight, and, and right on Route Six, Sandwich Road.
Thank you.
And, and that, that intersection there is, is where we are. And we have a couple of acres there, and, and, um, we decided to go that route, and, and as Peter says, there's, there's a, the dynamic is changing, uh, and, and also there's a, there's a real issue, issue in the industry about help and, and, and people, uh, trying to get people to, uh, work in, in, uh, intermediate care and nursing homes. So ha, given all these factors, uh, we were looking into do, something that the town needs, and we came up with the, um, idea of doing sixty units. Uh, we, we downsized the, uh, the bulk of the building, took down a number of units. And we feel that, uh, this would make a nice, um, uh, layout for people. We call it Crossroads Apartments, and, uh, would like to see if, uh, the town, uh, in, in the, the name of the board would, would, uh, like to see this go forward. Now, there's a, there's a process, uh, with the LIP development, uh, this is a, a whole, um, I guess, uh, I, I guess you wanna call it a process, but it, it's a, it's a, eh, eh, we all know what a Forty-B development uh, entails, and, and so there's quite a bit, uh, left to go, but this is the first step in, in, in a bit of a journey. And what I've done, as, as, as Peter has mentioned, uh, I've been in touch with EO HLC, uh, we're, we're meeting next week with, with the, uh, with the commissioner uh, to see what kind of programs are available, uh, on this, this whole, um, issue. Now, uh, financing is gonna be an issue because of the conditions, but, uh, the, the administration, current administration, uh, Governor Healy has got a big push on, on, uh, has made a big push on getting housing, and elderly housing is right up there on top. Uh, I'm a little bit familiar, uh, with, with some of these things that, that are coming up. Um, Peter has asked me to, I guess, say about a, a, a cou, a couple of projects that I've done. Uh, in, in the past fifteen years, I've been the capital project manager at Berkeley College of Music. Uh, I guess the biggest project was the one sixty Boylston Street, uh, building. It was a sixteen-story building that, uh, has a, um, hundred and forty, uh, well, they're, they're dorm rooms, but they're beautiful. They're like apartments. And, and we have, uh, four hundred-seat, um, cafeteria there. It's a pretty, pretty big complex. Uh, prior to that, uh, I did the Onyx Hotel in, in Boston on two hundred Portland Street. That was a project that I was owner, developer, and we used a big contractor. I wasn't the contractor in that, that project. Uh, but that, that was a hundred and twelve-room hotel that we, we did. That was a fourteen-story building. On something smaller, and, and it, it actually was back in the eighties, I did a six-story, uh, development at one forty-three Richmond Street, which some people may know as the, uh, the old Felicia's Restaurant. Uh, we did twelve, twelve units there, and I, I got my first taste of financing, a, a lady by the name of Kate Armstrong, who, uh, worked for a bank at the time, uh, and you know, I got involved in the financing, I got involved, uh, in the development, and I actually did the construction. My company did the construction. We did all the permitting and everything. The only, and, and that particular project, I had no ownership, interest in it. But it was quite an experience, and, and, uh, I, I still remember it fondly, uh, and, and I learned a lot. Uh, prior to that, I did twenty-five apartments in Andrew Square back in nineteen eighty-three or so, uh, and um, that was a, a pioneer area. Andrew Square in South Boston has changed quite a bit. I wish I still owned it. That was a, as an owner developer. So I, I don't wanna go on, uh, my experience. I started my, my business in nineteen sixty-nine. I've been around a long time. I hope to be around a little bit longer and, and continue to do this. Uh, if, if, is any questions on the development, I think that's, let me get back to that. Uh, the, uh, Chris, Chris Smith was in early. I don't know if he's still here. Uh, the, the, uh, we, we spent a lot of time with the site plant, with the zoning board, and, and, you know, talking with the fire department, and by the way, Chris Smith is a is one, uh, one asset to the community. He, he knows his stuff, and, and he was very, very good to work with. Um, we, we the turning radius of the trucks, the fire trucks, the access, everything, we went through a big, big process. The turning radius of the trucks, the fire trucks, the access, everything, we went through a big, big process with this uh, with this project. As a, as an intermediate care project. Uh, but everything that we did there. Uh, we've come, we've come, I think we can use it very successfully. In in the project that we're uh proposing right now, six sixty-unit apartment for elderly housing, I think would be a a good use for the space. It will be a. Uh, something that the town, I think, needs and would be proud of when we're done with it. If there's any questions.
Um, one, Peter, can, Mister Title, excuse me, can you put the? The um, screenshot shot of the lot? I'm not interested, I I need to see the lot again, I think that's an important one. Do you know what I mean?
Yeah, let me just scroll through the uh, uh, so they gotta. Let me see, I gotta go back.
Peter, that's on the civil drawings.
Uh, Mister Slaven or Mister Chadwick, do either of you have any questions of Mister Manix or Mister Title? Mister.
I'm trying to find.
Mister Chadwick, yep.
I'm trying to find my paperwork here, do you have a? Layout of the parking lot, am I missing it? I see the. I see all the floor plans, but I was just looking parking lot wise with fire lanes and. With this being a senior uh residence, I'm looking, there we go.
It it's there.
It should be there, there are sixty parking spaces.
Right, so. One, you know, I I'm I'm really not. Someone to say too much about this, but one thing I can recommend is at one of your doors. Make it uh an ambulance-only parking in my. Twenty-three years of being in the fire service, um. When we had to get in there through an entrance. It's uh, it's hectic with a lot of. Senior living places, cuz they're still driving in. And we're maneuvering cars and.
Yep.
It it can be, it can be a. Like, better terms, PIA sometimes.
It it uh, Mister Chadwick, uh, that there is an ambulance, dedicated ambulance parking right at the front door. And we, I I went over that with the uh EMTs.
Alright. Perfect, thank you.
Yep, that's so, that again, some of the things that we did for. I- intermediate care. Uh, a a very, very good for. Uh, the the kind of housing we're proposing now. Yeah, it 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 makes it uh, it makes it very easy to convert, if you will. It's like, if the building were there in in place, it would be a very easy conversion to do it, what we did was we took a whole floor off. To make it, make it a little less uh, less tall.
Mister Slaven?
Fred, what is your proposed uh rents for this project?
Well, we we, the uh, the HUD guidelines uh are very similar. To uh, the market rent in in Wareham. So there there would be uh, would be market rent, I I believe, I believe the rents and uh, I I don't have them in front of me, but they're a couple of thousand dollars. I I think very similar to Rosewood. Uh, those kind of places, that there are some um comparables in town. And the HUD guidelines are very similar to uh, the Bo- well, they're not similar, they are the Boston area. Rents, so uh, it makes it uh, again, we're back to the financing, I'm back to, I I wish, I don't know if if that lady, Kate, Kate was a wonderful person. I I'd I'd love to. I I'm gonna do that, try to find out what kind of financing is available and and uh, and see what we can do for uh rents. I believe the rents are sufficient with the sixty units. And the way the building is compactly made, I believe that they'll carry it financially. As long as the interest rates don't go crazy again, that's, I can't predict that.
Well, right now, the rates are starting to drop the other way around.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, the the HUD uh. You know, process that we have, uh, Wareham somehow got. Put into the HUD program for Boston, which has been a real detriment to the town as far as what the prices are. We've actually reached out to HUD, but I have to wait another year before they'll sit and talk to us, so. There might be a change coming in eight years' time, but I wouldn't hold my breath on that one. Uh, on the project itself, uh, I'm I'm looking at the paperwork. The i- is the project parallel to uh Sandwich Road, or is it more? Uh, parallel to uh Route. You know, the route coming in from uh Route Twenty-Eight?
It it's parallel to uh Sandwich Road, the it's kinda, it's kinda funny, and Plan View. It looks like Route Twenty-Eight is uh borders there, but it's it's up in the air, it's about, it's an embankment there, it's about sixteen feet high. So, uh, yeah, the the, everything is on Sandwich Road. It's kind of an interesting spot, uh, it's it's an unusual-shaped lot.
Okay, so you've got a good barrier to sound and noise with all the.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, it's 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 kind of in a hollow, uh, which which is great, you know? And what we did, I'll I'll, I don't wanna go too long, but I'm pretty proud of it, and we'd like to keep it. The the original plan is for a solarium at at the top. And we kept that, if we can keep that on there, I, you know, I. Uh, I think uh, it's a great spot, uh, it it faces due south and it'd be a beautiful uh spot to gather. Yeah, for people that that have been, it's a nice amenity.
Well, the town is desperate for uh senior affordable housing, basically.
Yeah.
You know, so anything that uh works in what we call a friendly forty B is definitely worthwhile. Rather than fighting with the forty Bs that really end up. Not helping the town whatsoever, so hopefully we'll try and get this done for you.
Okay, well, I appreciate that, thank you.
I- is there wetlands in the back of that property? Doesn't it back up to? Isn't there rivulet in the back?
It's a great piece of property because it it it's it's. It goes uphill, you know, it's upland, it it, there's no wetlands, it's beautiful gravel. Uh, we'll probably sell some loom out of there, it's, it used to be a farm. And it's a, it's a in great shape and and uh, it it's ideal, the the, yeah, we're not changing the contours of the land at all, hardly. You know, six or eight inches, which allows us to do underground parking, mo- mo- the bulk of the parking is inside the building. It's like, uh, it it the the property goes from. Let's say zero to ten feet below, and and you can drive right in, it's like, like a a house, a raised ranch type of house. And on one end, so that that's uh, it it lends itself, I think it'll blend in very nicely and and uh. Through through the board, the zoning board of appeal, uh, we had a long. Uh, design development process, let me put it to you that way, there's there's a lot of suggestions made. And everybody, uh, especially uh, the the town people that that came are happy with the look of the building.
Is the the um. Things that you have put into the package, it I would call it sort of Cape Codde, it's not.
Right.
You know, dreadful.
Yeah, that that was developed, that was developed with a lot of input, and I I I go along with, I think it the, it's a lot better looking than than when we started.
Any other questions? Uh, Mister Sullivan, go ahead, Mister Sullivan's our town administrator, as you know, Mister Manix.
I've met him.
If, Fred, I'm just uh backing up here, so it sounds like we 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 did something over at Littleton Drive. And there was a little pushback about that for the senior, they wanted some more family, but if I heard you correctly, it sounds like. New administration, new priorities, is that, is that what you're hearing out of the Commonwealth?
Yes, I mean, the the uh, we, in regard to the uh, the the uh, the units. Like, one, these are one and two-bedroom units, I, the the, these aren't family units.
Right.
Is, yeah, uh, the administration is is looking for housing. And and, you know, I think, I think in this particular case, this. This housing would be for. It's fifty-five and over. But I think uh it'd be great for older people because of the proximity to the uh, to the Toby Hospital. I mean, it it's it's a great spot to be, and uh, it's a great location and people can visit there, I mean, there's all kinds of, it's right off of twenty-five.
Yeah, well, I look at this, at the senior housing, one of the things I thought before is if you. You open up senior housing like this, it allows them that are currently in their homes to sell those homes, which then allows family housing. So it's a, it's kind of, it's a neat way to develop family housing, if you will, because you're moving the people that may. Have stayed in there until the very end and utilized, you know, weren't using all the space.
Oh, I see, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so, I I think that's a, that's an interesting. Way to pitch it to maybe the Commonwealth, that it does ultimately lead to family housing, if you're.
That that's great, that's a great heads up, cuz I am gonna meet with them, we have an appointment set up and and uh. I'm hoping that they can lead me in the right direction with the, with the financing side, I I don't know. How many people are familiar with development financing on the board, but uh, it it's quite a. It's quite an important matter, of course.
Um, you're talking to a twenty-three-year commercial lender here. So, yeah, I financed things like you and fishing vessels and, you know, you name it, I financed it.
Okay, well, it's, you you know what I'm talking about, that's that's the key to everything.
Mister Mister Sullivan, you all said on that one? Yes, okay, any other questions or comments?
Yeah, just one, one second, the um, I had, I had to mobilize, sorry. The one thing, Fred, did you get in before the sewer moratorium on this, on this project, cuz I know this has been going around for a few years now?
What moratorium?
The sewer.
Sewer.
No, we we, that was extended, uh, you know, we we have, we have sewage uh. Uh, set aside for us, uh, we have the, that's, that's been, I don't know, Peter can probably uh. Address that a little bit better, but we we have it and and we're actually committed to. Uh, if if it's necessary to help upgrade the pump, we're gonna uh, at the, at the sewer sewer department. To take the load, we we also, we also were talking to uh, a guy. About the possibility of when we do our sewer work, allowing some people to hook up along Sandwich Road. So we've talked about that, I, you know, as as there's nothing, I I don't know exactly what's gonna happen, but that's uh, that's what our intention is.
Just to jump in, uh, I I believe the moratorium is what, about a year old, am I correct about that?
A little bit more, yeah.
Because this, because the the current uh, the current permit that's in place and has been extended to twenty twenty-five. Uh, that was granted in December of twenty twenty-one.
Yeah.
So, uh, you know, he would have been in before. Uh, that moratorium, you know, sort of shut down anything new coming through the door.
Okay.
That that wouldn't be, that that wasn't outstanding, or we'd get caught up in that, so, thank you for the info.
Okay, thank you.
Everybody understands the problem, as Peter knows, cuz of the discussion just recently. It's the uh, cost is gonna be to Fred, unfortunately, for the cost of running a pipe down Sandwich Road. To make it, the sewer doesn't go far enough down. So there's gonna be a fairly large expense of running a pipe down the. Basically, what is Route Six?
Well, uh, I uh. I I'll I'll leave it at that, but uh, in in nineteen sixty-nine, I told you when I started my business, that was when I bought my first dump truck, and that's the business I was in. So, we're we're uh pretty well aware of it, it is a force system. And it's it's uh, it's gonna be a a good installation. It it is more expensive for the equipment, but the installation is uh, is pretty uh, non-invasive, which we need to do on on Route Six.
Yeah.
I'm not worried about that, I just feel bad.
Well, I would, I would just jump in and say, we do have a pipe layer sitting in as well, so.
We do. Are there any other comments or questions of this? Presentation? Um, I know that um. They are looking for a letter of. Support from us.
So moved.
Second.
But a motion made to write a letter of support to. Crossroads, or whatever the name of it is, yeah, Crossroads Apartment Senior Affordable Local Initiative Pro- Project. Motion made and seconded, any further discussion on the motion to have me write a letter on behalf of the board? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote.
I have one.
What?
I just, I I think this needs to be, you know, made known to the public, um. I've been looking for senior housing for a long time in this community for my parents, uh, so they can move closer, my father uh is. Uh, will say sick, uh, um, with Parkinson's disease, so. I think this is phenomenal, I'm extremely happy uh to see something like this going in here. Uh, cuz as we all know, there's really not much and. Uh, as you stated earlier. All the nursing homes, and I've been to a lot of them, are trash, and I said it.
Yeah, that's it's. It's a shame, you know, it really is.
Um, I'm I'm pleased that you have worked. Clearly worked very hard with the permitting authorities in this town to make it a friendly. Forty B, because that, to me, is is extremely important. Anyway, so there's a motion on the table, a seconded, any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll go for a roll call vote, Mister Slaven?
Yes.
Mister Chadwick?
Yes.
Myself, yes, thank you very much, we will issue a letter, Mister Titlebaum, if you have a. Um, proposed letter, I'd be happy to have you send it to me tomorrow and I'll get it to you. Great.
I shall, thank you, thank you very much, uh, Madam Chair and Board Members, it's very much appreciated, you know, people hear the forty B word. And, you know, they freak out about it, but there's two sides to forty B. One is when they come into your town and and jam a hundred and fifty units onto seven acres, because they can force you to do that when you don't have your, your ten percent. To block them, and the other way to do it is the way we're doing it here and the way Littleton Drive was done, which is to find a developer that'll come in and work with the town, work with the boards. Try to uh, do what it can to make something good for the residents, so I'm 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 proud to be involved with uh Fred on this. He knows what he's doing and Patrick as well, so thank you.
Thank you, enjoy the holidays, all three of you, and thank you very much.
Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, Happy Hanukkah.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night, we'll go back to the agenda, Mister Chadwick, we have a whole bunch of licenses and permits, and I think you can get away with the same kind of motion that you made last. Week, or whenever we had our last meeting to. You know, roll them into one for eight A.
Alright. I move for the renewal of the following year-round common Vic. All alcohol beverage license for the year twenty twenty-four under the provisions of chapter. One thirty-eight of the Mass General Law, as listed in the agenda. As well as having the Director of Inspection Services certify that the business applied with the town. Bylaws concerning advertising posters on the windows as listed in the agenda. Oops.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, um. I will note for the record that on the fire department certifications, we are putting the. Um, the occupancy load on the licenses. And if you are not sprinkled. You may not have more than ninety-nine in the building, ninety-nine individuals in a building at any one time. That includes the um. The servers, the bartenders, the, you know, whatever. So that information is being placed on all of our licenses, it was not available pre- previously, but it is there now. Motion made and seconded to approve, is there any further discussion on those motion? Hearing none, I'll go for a roll call vote, Mister Slaven?
Yes.
Mister Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is so, next, Mister Chadwick, B.
I move for the renewal of the following year-round common Vic lines and malt beverage license. For the year twenty twenty-four and the provisions of chapter one thirty-eight of Mass General Law to Mary Lavante DVA. Mama Mary's, two nineteen, Main Street, Wareham.
There's second to that motion. Motion made and seconded to approve, any further discussion on that motion? I will go for a roll call vote, Mister Slaven?
Yes.
Mister Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is so. Mister Chadwick, item C please, H C.
Alright, I move for the renewal of the follow. The renewal of the following year-round common Vic license for the year ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, under the provisions of chapter one forty of the Mass General Law. Uh, except subject to building fire inspection sign-offs as listed on the agenda.
Items one through twenty, is that your motion?
Yes.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. To approve, subject to um final check-offs, et cetera. Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote, Mister Slaven?
Yes.
Mister Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is so. Uh, Mister Chadwick, we are now on eight.
I move for the renewal of the following annual entertainment license for the year twenty twenty-four, weekdays only, under the provisions of Mass General Law, chapter one forty, section. One eighty-three A, as listed in the agenda.
There's a second to that motion.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve. As on the agenda, any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll go for a roll call vote, Mister Slaven?
Yes.
Mister Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is so. Eight D please, E, Mister Chadwick?
I move for the renewal of the following annual entertainment license for the year twenty twenty-four, Sundays only, under the provisions of Mass General Law, chapter one thirty-six. As listed in the agenda.
Is there a second? Motion made and seconded to approve, as on the agenda. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote, Mister Slaven?
Yes.
Mister Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is so.
Alright, I. Sorry.
Go ahead, F.
I move for the renewal of the following class. I move for the renewal of the following class two license for the year twenty twenty four, under the provisions of chapter one forty of the Massachusetts General Laws, to A one Auto Unlimited LLC DBA, A one Auto Unlimited LLC at fifty-eight Sandwich Road in Wareham, Mass.
Motion made.
Second, and just for a note, they've done an excellent job cleaning up that whole lot, the building, et cetera. It's a nice improvement for the area there.
Was that a second?
Yes, it was.
Motion made and seconded, um, to approve. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mister Slaven?
Yes.
Mister Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is so. I will note for the record that the all liquor establishments have been notified that they must comply with the twenty-five percent, no more than twenty-five percent window coverage by law, zoning by law. Um, and Mister Turner will, our Director of Inspection Services will be double checking on those, um, right after the new year. Okay, Mister Chadwick, I will.
Judy, that al- that also includes doors and windows.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right.
Well, yeah, Mister Chadwick, uh, nine A, sir.
I move to accept a hundred and seven dollar donation from Stop and Shop to the Council on Aging.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve, to accept. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mister Chadwick?
Yes.
Mister Slaven?
Yes.
And myself, yes. The second one, Mister Chadwick, is a one hundred dollar, uh, donation to the Council on Aging from an anonymous, anonymous donor.
Okay. I move to accept a donation of a hundred dollars from an anonymous donor to the Council on Aging.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to accept a donation. Is, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mister Slaven?
Yes.
Mister Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes. We've already, uh, agreed to write a letter of support. Um, Mister Slaven, are you ready to talk about the cannabis regulations and the mess that we seem to be facing or do you not yet?
Unfortunately, uh, the state still has not, uh, brought forth for cannabis cafes, et cetera, any rules and regulations yet because we'll have to go back to the planning board to, uh, decide what they want for numbers, locations, et cetera, if it's gonna be restrictions or not. So at this point, we'll just keep it on the agenda and as soon as I get information, I'll bring it forth.
Okay, thanks. Um, the item for discussion and reassignment of liaisons to boards and committees, I would like to postpone that until we have a full board. Um, and a new member to the Wareham Affordable Housing Trust that meets during the day, so I'm guessing.
I'm gonna ask that we just go through with that because I, I can't do it. I know that and I'm pretty sure.
But Mister Vesey cannot either, yeah.
It's gonna have to be the Judy, right? Depending on how we work it out, possibly both of us do it and pick it up as we can.
Well, it needs to be an actual member, cause it's a voting member.
Okay, well, we'll flip a coin or something, wait till after the first of the year.
Somebody screaming in the background saying no.
That's because I think, uh, Mrs. Slaven is on that committee.
Yes, she is. Okay.
Unfortunately, unfortunately, I, I can't really do it for another eighteen years, two months, seven days, two hours and fifty-eight minutes. That, that's when I retire, so.
Is that your atomic watch countdown?
Yes.
You can come visit, you can visit me at my grave then.
Mister Chadwick, I will accept a motion on item nine G, which is to approve the seasonal population increase estimation, which is forty-four thousand.
All right.
On an annual basis.
I move to approve the twenty twenty-four A B C C seasonal population increase estimation form.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve, which includes it to forty-four thousand?
Forty-four thousand.
Yeah. Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mister Slaven?
Yes.
Mister Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is so. Mister Ch- uh, Chadwick, I'll accept a motion. The annual renewal certification lists those, uh, licenses that were not renewed or new, and we, again, we submit that on an annual basis to the A B C C. Their motion, please?
I move to approve the twenty twenty-four A B C C renewal certification.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the annual certification. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mister Slaven?
Yes.
Mister Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is so. Mister Town Administrator, you are next. Discussion and possible vote to authorize the Town Administrator to enter into an intermunicipal agreement with Gatra to utilize the former Deacon School location. Mister Sullivan, up to you.
And I'm on my phone now because my, my charger is not working on the lap, so I hope you can still hear me pretty well.
Yep.
The Deacon School, Gatra requested to enter into an intermunicipal agreement to temporarily use, and by temporary, a pro- no, no more than eighteen months, use the Deacon School property, including the building and a portion of the parking lot. Um, it'd basically be the equivalent of a triple net lease where they would assume all the costs and the liabilities of the location. And on top of that, I think there'd be, right now, we've talked about a nominal amount, maybe, maybe a thousand dollars a month. This would be, I tell you, would be a big savings for us. We're, we're running down on the, uh, the money we have available. So I think while we, we work on the future of this site, it's, uh, frankly, a, what would be called a no-brainer, so.
Okay, I'll accept a motion unless any of you have a question. Mister Slaven, do you have a question or a comment?
I just comment, uh, this has been, uh, discussed for a little while, uh, being on the Gatra board as the Vice Chair. Uh, you know, they reached out to me because I hope people understand that Gatra is in the process of putting a terminal storage bus area in Wareham to cover their, what we would call their southwest area that they have, you know, bus service, which goes up to Plymouth and north of that, et cetera. So we would end up, uh, I believe, having expanded bus service over a period of time as well. It'll make it a lot easier for us and uh, Gatra is also going into the alternative energy buses, which will give us, again, uh, a step ahead of a lot of other areas. As for green, you know, initiatives, et cetera, so this is all a plus and having them, helping them get established with their new location. You know, in West Wareham, it's gonna be a great thing for the town overall.
Thank you. Mister Chadwick?
One question, um, not so much a question, just, uh, so I know I'll get the question, um. Mister Sullivan, can you just make sure the, the, there's not gonna be any Gatra buses or whatever on the fields? Cause I know I'll get questioned by parents about it or anything like that. I, I know the answer to that, but I, I know I'm just gonna get, oh, what's, what's, what's going on and are we gonna lose the fields?
Yeah, Gatra bus drivers lose their, lose their license if they drink and drive, so you will not have them driving on the fields.
Now, may I have a motion, please?
Yes, yes, of course. I move to authorize the Town Administrator to enter in an intermunicipal agreement with Gatra to utilize a former Deacon School location.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Is there any further discussion on the motion to authorize? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mister Slaven?
Yes.
Mister Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is so. Mister Town Administrator? Um, a possible vote to authorize you to enter into an agreement with COG Inc., COG Inc. for the CDBG Grant Management Services. May I he- hear from you, Mister Sullivan, about why you would like us to do this?
Yes, I think you've already authorized me to do this when you, when you did authorize me to issue the RFP and everything, but we had, but we had no, we had one response on the RFP and this is for the grant management for the Community Development Block Grant. Just so people know, uh, we say this a lot, but we are a mini entitlement community. Uh, so it's eight hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars annually. It's, it's good and bad, right? Being a mini entitlement community means we get this, we're able to support things like, we've done things for the, uh, for the Wareham Housing Authority, Gatra passes, the, uh, Damian's, uh, so we, a lot of public service and social services and a lot of good activities. However, the reason we have that is because of the low income status of a lot of our, our residents. So, um, there's only about nine of these in the Commonwealth and most of them, if you will, it's, uh, gateway cities. So it's interesting for us to be included in that. Uh, so, but this is, if you remember, we, we tried doing this in-house for a little while. It did not work out well. Uh, the, it's really in-depth. You can't do it part-time. You can't put this on a, you know, a, a portion of your staff. Uh, so the, you really need somebody that's engaged, knows the rules, the laws and, and, uh, so that's where COG Inc. comes in. And this would be for the twenty-two grant and the twenty-three grant. If you remember, they combined those together, which is why we basically had a gap, gap here, uh, moving forward.
Okay, great. Mister Chadwick, I'll have a motion, please?
I move to authorize the Town Administrator to enter into an agreement with COG Inc. for CDBG Grant Management Services and other related services for the fiscal year twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three mini entitlement grant.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to authorize. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mister Slaven?
Yes.
Mister Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is so. One more, Mister Sullivan?
Yes, phase two of the Wong Kinko Road, we was bid out, uh, project. We received two bids and there was a pretty big gap from them. Um, one is Engrenees and Sons, which was three million, three hundred and forty-seven thousand, two hundred and fifty-one dollars and ten cents. The other, um, was a, was a smaller firm and, uh, traditionally, they do some, some smaller projects and when they actually came and saw the project and visited the site, they, basically, they withdrew their, their bid. So, uh, uh, they did not realize how much, uh, um, what would you call it? The de-watering it would take. So, uh, we allowed that because obviously we want this project to move forward. So again, it's what I'm gonna ask and the reason why it's coming before the, the select board is this would be the Platte County ARPA funds. It's eligible for it the way it was bid. Uh, and as I said, it's a three point three, four million dollar project. What I would ask is, you know, a bit of a ten percent contingency, the bo- board to vote to allow up to three point seven five million of the ARPA funds, which will essentially wipe us out. We're at, we have a little over four million. Um, no, and we've not expended it because we've been trying to put it towards this project. So I would say if we do that, if there's any, any issues, anything we come up against, we're covered.
Three point seven, you said, sir?
It's three, three point seven five. It's a little over ten percent.
Mister Chadwick, I'll accept a motion?
You have Mister Slaven raising his.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mister Slaven, I'm sorry.
Would it be bet- would it be better if we just bring it right up to four million? Cause we know the, as you go along in all these projects, especially what's been happening down there with, you know, these pipes, everything is in water, et cetera. Just bring it right up to four million unless it's gonna be a problem for access, will we make it easier?
Yeah, I prefer not to in case we want to come up with a project in the meantime for the extra, for the other, uh, two hundred and fifty K. So, we're setting it up.
Well, we know shit floods anyways.
Mister Chadwick, I'll accept a motion.
I move to authorize allocation of ARPA funds of three point seven five million for phase two of the Winko Project.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the use of the ARPA funds. Any further discussion?
Yeah, did we, sorry, did we, it cut out there for a second, my phone. Did we say for three point seven five million?
Yes.
Yes, we did. Yeah. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mister Slaven?
Yep.
Mister Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes. It is so. Any forty-eight hour business? Nope. Town administrators report.
Yeah, um, yesterday, as you know, was a really tough day. The, I think the, uh, unfortunately, the forecast undersold the amount of flooding we would get. I will tell you, I've, I've been in the community for over twelve years and that was the worst storm that I'd seen for, for flooding. Uh, you know, we had the, the remembrance trees are actually, uh, good port, more underwater. Back into Merchant's Way, I watched the, the poor lady at the air salon, her back door was open to her basin, water flooding in, the car in there, dumpsters. Swiss Beach, the, uh, all the way up to Circle Drive was underwater. Uh, you know, Lopes Field, if you remember, uh, I think I caught a little bit of flak for not wanting rubber, uh, the, the rubber surfaces down, down in there and that, that's why. So it's, uh, I know sometimes I'm called a little too conservative on these things and I, but I hate to be right in these cases. It was, uh, it was some pretty intense flooding and that was not a hurricane. And I think the highest wind gust we actually recorded was sixty-seven miles per hour over at the pier. So, folks, things can get a lot worse. I was watching over at the Narrows as the water wasn't just lapping up, it was hitting on the side of the Narrows Bridge going over. Any higher, the next step was going over it. So, yeah, the, you know, the, in other words, it couldn't go under anymore. So it's, it's real. Um, I was over at, uh, uh, North Water Street and onset, so uh, we lost some benches, some other things, so we'll, we'll go over. Um, one of the big things that you can do, uh, cause we, we had calls about some catch basins that were clogged and the companies out there that's cleaning out them, leaves and pine needles are the number one things that cause that, especially in heavy rain and flooding. So if you, if you see beforehand, if you see the storm and there's, there's leaves debris in there, uh, we used to have a catch basin from my house, I'd rake it out or else the, in front of my driveway, I'd have a puddle and an ice sheet. So, I tell you, it's much easier to get to it ahead of time. But in the rain conditions like yesterday, when it came down, it's just pushing everything right to it. And that's the, the South Wareham Bridge, which is located in West Wareham. Um, the, the South Wareham Bridge, the amount of leaves underneath that, the, from all the water flowing down were incredible. They were pulling it out by, I wouldn't even call it the bucket load. I'd, I'd say it was, uh, front-end loader load. So it's, um, it was pretty, a pretty impressive storm. Uh, down at Swiss, I went out to get the, uh, a recording of, uh, some of the waves and the wind caught two high ones. It just, it just, it soaked me right through, so. I think, uh, some people had a nice, good chuckle at that one. So that was, that was the main one. I think all of us saw it. Uh, wherever we were, but it's, it's just a reminder of how intense it can be and where we are in Buzzard's Bay, what can happen.
Mister Sullivan, can I, can I add to that real quick?
Sure.
If, if you don't mind, um, also note for all the residents, these big storms is not the time for you to go out and drive around and look at all the fun stuff. Uh, us and Dennis yesterday, forty-five calls in twenty-four hours and then we receive a call for someone who decided to sightsee and drove their car into a lake. Uh, don't do it. Just use your brain, please, for the love of God. All of our emergency services are stretched thin all across Massachusetts with storms like this. Uh, for us to respond to you doing something stupid just makes life a heck of a lot harder for everyone. Sorry, go ahead.
Um, I'll just add that a friend of mine who's a scientist believes that really the way the, the rain was coming in in bands along with the wind, um, suggests that it's an extratropical cyclone hurricane, despite the fact that it didn't get to the seventy-four miles per hour. But it did on the top of Blue Hill. So as far as I'm concerned, I've been here a little bit longer than most of you. Um, and it was just about as good as fifty-four.
Yep.
At Mister Slaven?
Just a quick, uh, question, Derek. How do we do over Swiss Beach in the new playground? I'm really concerned about stuff flooding away there.
Yeah, no, the playground is completely underwater, right up to, right through Circle Drive up to some of the homes.
That's all that's afraid of.
Yeah, so the whole area, the, over there. Yeah, so the whole area, the over there and the uh, the other and on the other side um, of Swift's too. It was, it was coming up right through the uh, the roadways there. It was, it was impressive, I'll tell you.
Well, we've lost the barrier beach in front of that whole area, which people don't realize that barrier beach really knocked everything down. But now without that there anymore, this, I'm expecting some really major flooding when we get a storm, which we will eventually get. The times working against us.
Yep. Excellent. Mister Sullivan, do you have anything else, sir?
No, ma'am.
Oh, Mister Sullivan, why are you dressed like you're going to the Arctic?
I just never took off my work, my jacket from when I got home from work.
Okay, sorry.
Maybe it's a flak jacket, I'm worried about.
Oh, yeah, it might be that, yeah. Um, liaison initiative reports, Mister Slaven.
Um, we had uh, Peer View had a Christmas party for the, basically for the public, for the aunt's and et cetera. It was an excellent event, everybody had a good time. Uh, Bebo's over in Onson also, uh, was collecting clothing, et cetera. For people, tremendous amount of jackets were collected. Um, trying to think who else. I think those were the two that I ran into that were working overtime, doing stuff for the town. Uh, last thing is, we had uh, on Thursday, didn't get publicized enough, uh, a meeting on the bike path. Uh, presented with uh, J C Engineering and uh, Town Planner, et cetera. Uh, I called the newspaper up to correct some of the information. One of the things on the newspaper article was trying to say that most likely the bike path could actually be started. And finished in twenty twenty-six. I had to explain to them that the bike path is on the tip program, which is how things work. Getting federal and state money for twenty twenty-eight, if we get everything done in place to all the pieces. Uh, Mister Buckland has applied for a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar Mass Trails Grant. Which would give us the monies to take care of the rest of the engineering and the takeouts, et cetera. But it doesn't take care of our expense of maintaining the bike path, et cetera, and the labor involved. So that's gonna be a difficult decision for the town if we get to that point. I'm just gonna make that very clear to everybody that. It's there and I'm reaching out now, if people in Wareham want a bike path that will end up connecting. From basically uh, Westport through Fall River, New Bedford, et cetera, down through Wareham. And down to Buzzards Bay, which would basically merge into the canal bike path and go over the bridge into the two paths that way. Or the one up to Mile Standish, we need some kind of support. We need a bike path committee and we need a group called the Friends of the Bike Path Committee. Because without support like that, uh, we're basically spinning our wheels. Thank you.
Gee, shouldn't the bike path go through the tunnel instead of over the bridges?
No, that's tunnel number seventeen, that's over actually aboard.
Oh, okay. Um, Mister Chadwick, Mister Chadwick.
No, nothing, thank you though.
You're welcome. Um, I just want to remind people that there is a sign bylaw. Um, and that if you're going to be placing signs out, advertising your Christmas fair or whatever. You need to come to the select board office and fill out a form. Um, and if you have not filled out a form and you've been putting uh, signs out, they will be picked up. Because we have a sign bylaw, you actually are liable for a fine on a daily basis. So I suggest, for those of you who think that pre-advertising is, you know, sticking something on town property, don't. Um, Mister Chadwick, I'm gonna ask you to do some motions for the minutes. We will be going into executive session for reason number two only. We will be taking a five-minute break after we do the um, minutes. And we will clear the audience, we will come back into executive session and Mister Sullivan will not be present during that discussion. Mister Chadwick.
All right, I move to approve the following meeting minutes. Uh, for select board meeting minutes of eleven twenty-one, twenty-three with scrimmers error. Uh, select board meeting minutes of eleven twenty-eight, twenty-three. Uh, and then select board executive meeting minutes eleven twenty-eight, twenty-three, approve and hold. And select board joint meeting minutes of eleven twenty-seven, twenty-three.
So the three of them are simply to approve and the uh, executive is approve and hold, is that correct?
As I stated.
Okay, Mister, is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote, Mister Slaven.
Yes.
Mister Chadwick.
Yes.
Myself, yes, it is so. All right, um, we are going to be going into executive session for reason. Number two, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel. Or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or to con- or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. And if the chair so declares that it would um jeopardize those, and I so declare. So we will now have a five-minute recess, it is eight.
Madam Chairman, uh, on your, on your motion to be taken by roll call vote.
Oh, I'm sorry, yep.
And to uh, adjourn straight from executive session.
Yes, thank you, sorry about that. Um, roll call vote. Uh, yeah, I need a motion. So, okay.
So moved in second.
Okay, um, any further discussion?
Second.
Okay, um. A roll call vote, Mister Slaven.
Why not?
Mister Chadwick.
Yes.
And myself, yes. So as stated, we will be adjourning from the executive session. And it is now eight seventeen, we will be re-grouping at eight twenty-two. Okay, thank you very much. Good night, Wareham, and um, thank you, Mister Sullivan. Oh, happy holidays, Mister Sullivan. Um, hope you and your family have a great holiday. And a safe holiday and actually to all of the people in Wareham, happy holiday season and safe holiday season.
Happy all, one, thank you.